All right, welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to begin our meeting. Everyone, please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. I'm Dave Atkins and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. This meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center, and if anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so that the audience is aware. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be that when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium and present their application. The board will proceed to staff comments. Board members will ask questions of the applicant, and for public hearing items, the public will have an opportunity to comment. If there are items that don't require a public hearing, then the Chair will, at the discretion of the Chair on the Board, will have a public comment. When it is time for the public comment period, the Chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the Chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And I'll just reiterate how it's very important to use the microphones because the recording from Westwood Media Center doesn't pick up the sounds from the audience very well, and so people ask questions. It's important to use the microphone so that we all get the same information. That's our general process. So first question, Abby, are there -- Abby's our town planner. Are there any changes to the agenda?
For item number one, this is a continued public hearing for 200 University Avenue for an EIDR. You had previously continued the hearing till tonight. They are not ready and are requesting one more continuance to your next meeting on Tuesday, January 29th, in the same room at 7:00 PM.
Would someone like to make a motion now?
So I move to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, January 29th at 7:00 PM in the same room here at 50 Carby Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That hearing will be continued to Tuesday, January 29th, 7:00 PM at 50 Carby Street, this location. Is there another change, Abby?
And then item number four, Morgan Pharma State's bond reduction. I had put that on expecting to have that tree planting plan approved, but I have not had the opportunity to perform a site visit and finalize that plan. So it's not a hearing. You don't have to vote on it, but I recommend that we'll bring that back at your next meeting on the 29th.
Okay, we can do that. So I think if there are no other changes to the agenda, the first item up is 240 University Ave Avenue. This is a environmental impact design review, continued public hearing for facade changes, parking lot and landscape improvements there at 240 University Ave.
Good evening, Chairman Atkins, members of the Board, and Ms. McCabe. My name is Mark Bowdre. I'm with Meridian Associates, and I'm a professional engineer here in Massachusetts. And we, our firm, did the engineering, landscaping and landscape architects on this proposed project. With me this evening is Dan Edmiston from Dakon Corporation. And Dakon is the, you know, the construction manager's GC for the project. And so Dan, can you answer any questions you might have about the building work, you know, the scheduling, whatever it might be? You know, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Board might have relative to the site plan improvements. So since the last public hearing, we have made some pretty significant changes and, you know, to the project plans in response to the beta comments received as well as input from the town. And we've actually gone through two revisions over that time period. And I'm happy to say that we now have, I think, closure on all those items with, you know, in the beta review letters. So anyway, I think that process went quite well, and so we're happy to hopefully have that behind us. And at this point, what I could do if the Board wishes is to go through, you know, quickly the changes that have been made to the site plans. The, it looks like the plan is, the site plan is up on the monitor right now, which is showing the upper side of the site. It's about a three-acre site at 240 University Ave, at the corner of University Ave and Dartmouth Street. So University Ave over here, Dartmouth Street. And anyway, it's, so the building has about a 46,000-square-foot roof area, and that is, actually, the laser pointer doesn't work too well on the screen.
Unfortunately, it doesn't work on the screen.
So anyway.
If you, if you're, welcome to point if you just bring the mic with you.
Yeah.
Pick up the microphone.
Very good. Nice. So can you hear me?
Yep.
So the, not wanting to block anybody, but the building is down on the bottom side, as you can see on the plan, with the two existing parking areas are accessed onto Dartmouth Street with, again, University Ave on the plan left. So since the last meeting, the owner has agreed to, working with Dakon and whatnot, has agreed to improve the parking surfaces out here by basically, you know, essentially doing a full-deck pavement reclamation process is what we're envisioning, to grind up the pavement that's there, to reshape the, you know, the grading of the site to provide better drainage that I can speak to in a minute, and then have new parking surfaces out here. So basically, you know, keeping the same number of parking spaces on-site that exists today with some minor modifications, which we had on the original site plan. Essentially relocation of the accessible parking spaces and making them uniformly sized. So there are loading docks at this location right here, which are accessed with the, these striped areas for trailer parking. So one of the importance of regrading of the site for drainage was that we've added a, there was a single catch basin at this location right here that takes care of the surface runoff off of the easterly parking area and does pick up a roof drain that we believe runs from the building through that catch basin and then out to the street down towards the railroad tracks on Dartmouth Street. There was no stormwater BNP's really at all in the, in this side of the parking area. So what is now being, what is now added is three catch basins at these two driveway, two at these driveway openings and one in the low point of the other parking area. The one that we have here will be eliminated. Those three catch basins will be deep sump catch basins with hoods on them, meeting DEP standards. They'll be then routed through a stormwater treatment unit that will connect into a new drain manhole to go out to the street. Now, that was the first round of revisions. We also added, at that time, a dry well to enhance recharge for the roof drainage. But the second round of revisions over the last week or so, we've agreed to add a subsurface infiltration chamber system at this location that will pick up that roof, clean roof runoff and basically take the first one-inch of runoff off of the roof and put that into the ground. So this chamber system has been designed to basically retain and recharge the first one-inch of runoff off of the roof. So that has been added, will then connect into the same manhole on the downstream end of the treatment unit. So the stormwater flows off of this site now will be pretreated. The, you know, obviously now the, you know, peak flow rates will be reduced. Volumes of runoff will be reduced off the site. And we're now meeting the, you know, requirements basically for a redevelopment site for the watershed protection overlay district. So there's been a substantial improvements on this site as far as a stormwater management, stormwater quality standpoint. So from a overall site layout standpoint, real quick, we've added a dumpster, pad dumpster enclosure. And details for all this stuff, by the way, is also on the detail sheets. We did add a second detail sheet to encompass these things. There was a modification since last time to the overall planting plan where we, the applicant is, the owners agreed to add street trees. There's another one down here, as you can see on the overall plan. Yep, okay. So there's four street trees now being added. Additional trees here. We did have four trees in this island originally. We've changed it to two to have better snow storage capability and moved two of those trees out to the front. So we added two more, actually, net gain of two beyond the initial plan the Board looked at. And then also moved some of, you know, the shrub material back off of the pavement edges to have, you know, better snow storage capabilities around the edges. So we did add a couple of turnarounds, you know, to here to facilitate, you know, the dead-end parking areas. And so, boy, Abby, am I missing anything? It's, that was the, that's the substantial changes since the last Board meeting. But the, I would be happy to answer any questions on the site design at this point, if you'd like.
Any immediate questions? Phil, do you want to, also, I want to thank you, Phil, for, Phil, our peer-view consultant here, has wrote a memo. It's a seven-page document, and this, I think, is available for people, you know, anyone who wants to go download it from the website. And it has the whole back and forth of all the improvements that were made to this design. So did you want to address any of that here? We don't need to go over every detail, but just kind of.
So again, thank you, Phil Paritas. So the applicant's engineer's been very responsive to our, to the issues, and I think we worked out pretty well. I think major improvements for stormwater. And we were just being told that they have to go to Conservation and do the stormwater management, land disturbance permit, but I think they're well along the way in terms of meeting the requirements there. And generally, it was, you know, a good redevelopment.
Thanks, Phil.
Are there any other, any Board member questions? Or Abby, would you want to, if not, we could summarize the conditions or see if there is any?
The only other comment I would add is that the applicant is scheduled for a zoning board of appeals hearing for their special permit because it's in the Water Resources Protection Overlay District. So that's scheduled for next week's hearing. So after your meeting tonight, I'll provide comments from you with your latest update. And then, as mentioned, we realized there was a stormwater review triggered with the parking lot changes. So depending on that amount, if it's over half the acre, and it looked like it was, is that right?
Yeah, it's about, just the payment alone is about 2,000 square feet over that half acre. And then with the additional disturbances associated with the plant materials, the sidewalk improvements, the pathway off the south end of the building, you know, it's, we're over half an acre.
So that's filing with the Conservation Commission. And then I have prepared some draft conditions, 13 of them, for when you're ready for that point. I could summarize them now, or?
Let's see, if no one, none of the Board members have questions, is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this or ask any questions? If not, then Abby?
Actually, I realize maybe we did have one question for the applicant. I think last time someone had asked about accessibility upgrades to the building. I know the parking is changing. Those spaces are moving closer to the doors. And that the new, is it the walkway? I know there are some changes in the walkway out front. Will that be accessible all the way to the front of the building?
Yep, I can show you on that as well. If you could pan down. Currently, the, this is the main entrance to the building, and it is not accessible. The two little restaurant components, there was a pizza place, et cetera, are accessible on this end via this concrete patio area. But the main door, the front door, was not. So what we're proposing to do is have the front sidewalk. At this point, we will start ramping. I shouldn't use the term ramp. It's actually sloping up at a slope less than 5%. So it meets the accessible walkway requirements without doing an accessible, without doing an accessible ramp. So at this point, and the same thing from University Ave sidewalk will be coming up to meet a landing area at the front door to make that front doorway accessible.
Okay, thank you.
We did relocate some of the park, like, there was an accessible parking space here that we brought everything over to here to access the doorways and would not have the accessible parking space over here anymore. Because this was kind of a pseudo-ramp area now getting to that doorway, but that does not comply with accessibility requirements. It's too steep.
So actually, there are some requested waivers. Maybe we should describe what those are, and then we can vote on the waivers, and then we can go over the conditions, and then we can vote on the overall. There's four waivers.
Right, four waivers. The traffic impact from the requirement of providing the full traffic impact study, and then also providing the layout map on a separate plan. It's shown on the development plan. From providing a full exterior lighting plan in the presentation model. The applicant has stated that they're not changing any of the lighting, so they've requested that waiver.
There's actually six waivers total.
Six waivers?
Yep.
Which two am I missing?
Some of them, frankly, were just submission requirements that were not applicable, really, to the job.
What is the current lighting on there now? Does it meet what we request?
I don't think there's much, Dan Edmiston from Dakon. I don't think there's much lighting out there right now. I think there's a couple wall packs basically above some exits and entrance areas, and that's really about it.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any parking lot lighting, per se.
Okay. So I think the six waivers, the first waiver was to submit plans on 30-by-42-inch paper. And that's, I think you updated the plan, so that waiver's not.
That's true. Maybe we're down to four now. I think you could, yep.
General layout map. And then the site development plan, because there's no changes to the layout. That's not needed, I think, right? This is waiver number three?
Three.
Yeah, and number three calls for, like, planning profiles of streets and ways. And we, a lot of that stuff with exterior lighting plan, wireless facility plan requirements, those are, we did provide, we didn't provide a separate landscape plan. The landscape requirements were, proposals were on the actual site plan itself. So I think it's more of a formality, really.
I think we still need the waiver, right? It's just that it's not.
Yeah, it's more of a, yeah. Waiver of the way it's presented.
Mr. Chairman, we did have a location, locus map on the site plan. We just didn't do a separate location plan. I think that was waiver number two.
Okay, yep, that's.
And then originally, you had requested the waiver from providing the stormwater report, but we did get that, an updated version yesterday.
So that's the six.
Yep.
Anybody have any concerns with the waivers?
Okay, so I make a motion to waive the following application, the previously mentioned application requirements because they're not necessary for the scope of the project for the redevelopment of an existing building.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the waivers are granted?
Thank you.
I think we can move on to the conditions.
Right, so I had drafted a list of 13. The first one is to provide an updated parking calculation to myself and the building commissioner when the rest of the building has new uses proposed. At this time, there wasn't a full tenant fit out, so they didn't have the exact parking calculations so that we could verify zoning compliance. Number two is any future change of use or exterior alterations may be subject, will be subject to Section 7.3, which is the EIDR. Condition number three is that the applicant should perform soils test prior to doing the drainage work to verify the assumptions that were made and that the town should be contacted during those testing. Number four was about the dumpster screening. That reminds me, I just didn't see the gate on the detail page. Was there a gate on the dumpster? I only saw on the detail, it looked like it showed one side of the fence. But I just want to make sure we have the full detail provided.
The detail, I think you're correct, does not show a gate. However, the site plan does say enclosure with gate.
Oh, yeah, it does say that. But if you could provide an updated dumpster detail. So that was to submit the updated dumpster detail to me for approval and that the gate should be closed at all times and screened in compliance with the Board of Health regulations. All the exterior lights, other than security lights, should be turned off an hour after close of business. Trees in the landscaping shall be installed and completed prior to occupancy. Now, it sounds like the applicant's going to be working on this soon. So then I've added, if it's the winter months, the applicant shall install complete plantings by May 30th to put that allowed timeframe in the spring. It's usually recommended, usually mid-April, to start plantings. Number seven, the trees shall be planted at least four-inch caliper in size at the time of planting, and then two inches for any shrubs. The applicant shall contact DPW at least 48 hours in advance of the soil testing and during the installation of the drainage. Applicant, and then we have the standard conditions related to any other permits that may be required, licensing through the Board of Health, the asbestos survey report, and repairing any damage to be coordinated with DPD, DPW if there are damage to any of the roads or street features.
Abby, was there any thought of, like, a bike rack or anything like that? Does that?
I didn't think of that, but you could.
Right now, it's, we don't know the use of the property will be whatever it is, but it's right in the same areas the rest of the university stations. What's our general practice in terms of?
In the university station area, do you have bike racks throughout the development?
And I know that we've done that with, like, Hogan Tire, for example. There's a bike rack out there, which could be useful. But, I mean, how do you feel about having just a single bike rack on that property there?
Right now, the building's just planned to be used for warehouse, pretty much. If there, we do have a wholesale occupancy in there, and there's also an office area. Once those are occupied, I don't see any problems with it at all. We have a really tight site, as long as the bike rack isn't too large. We can find a good spot for it. I don't have any issues with it at all.
Okay, so you could add that as a condition to install a bike rack?
Will you specify a size, or?
We do have standard dimensions of the bike racks that we could send to you.
Abby, is sodium chloride allowed down at university?
No.
So, because I noticed in the stormwater management, they said use of it would be limited, but it should not be used at all?
I think that's in the, yeah, in the Water Resources Protection Overlay. I know it was prohibited in our University Ave operation.
Does this fall within the?
Is it, I think it is. Is it, it's?
Not Zone 1. It's, I don't believe.
Is it, it's?
Portion of it?
Okay, it is in Zone 1.
A portion or the whole thing? By the train tracks?
Okay, so what, I'm sorry, what's the question?
So you had down there that the use of sodium chloride would be limited? It's not allowable in that area?
Okay.
We have calcium chloride is what we, is that right? I'm just looking at Nora here. Is it calcium chloride or magnesium?
Magnesium.
Magnesium. Okay.
Okay, that's fair.
So we should add that as a condition to revise that in the submitted documents?
So I make a motion to approve the EIDR application.
Oh, actually, is there anyone in the public comments? Would anyone like to comment on this?
So I make a motion to approve the EIDR application for 240 University Ave, as shown on the site plans and stormwater report revised through January 7th with the previously mentioned conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Need a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on 240 University Ave.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing's closed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The next item, next item on the agenda is the Westwood, is a public hearing, continued public hearing from December 11th on the Westwood Open Space and Recreation Plan. The Open Space and Recreation Plan sets goals and recommendations to protect open space and recreation resources in Westwood. And I believe, Nora, you're going to give us a presentation.
All right, so you should have a copy of the draft Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Identify yourself.
Sorry, Nora Lockne, Director of Community and Economic Development. And I've been assisting the Open Space Recreation Planning Committee, which submitted a draft Open Space Recreation Plan update for your consideration. You should have a copy of that plan, which includes appendices. The Open Space and Recreation Plan was originally adopted in 2000, so it's 18 years old, and it's well time that we review it and provide updates. The updated OSRP must be adopted by the Planning Board and submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for approval. And then once it's approved by the DRC, the town, DCR, the town becomes eligible for various grants for open space acquisition and for recreation development. The Select Board established the Open Space Recreation Planning Committee back in late 2017, and the Board, that committee met several times throughout 2018 to review goals and objectives, to meet with our consultant, Gino Carlucci of PGC Associates, and to prepare the draft update, which is now before you. The first step, the committee submitted a survey that was released. It was an online survey with paper copies distributed at various locations throughout town, including the libraries and the senior center and town hall. That survey received a total of 809 responses. 641 responses came in in that initial period, which ran from the Fall Town Meeting in November of 2017 through, I believe it was early January, went through the month of December. I believe we closed it at the beginning of January. Then we reopened it because we saw that there was a very small number of residents. Then we reopened it because we saw that there was a very small number of residents in the age group of under eighteen who had responded. So we contacted the high school principal, and he offered the survey to students. So we reopened it for two weeks in February and received an additional, let's see, there were six hundred and forty-one initial responses. We received, I don't see, the one hundred and sixty-eight additional ones, so one hundred and sixty-eight of those responses. Most of them were from high school students. The summary in the Open Space Recreation Development, Open Space and Recreation Plan goes through the full survey, all the questions that were asked. There's a summary in the document. The appendix includes everything about the survey, but some points that I would want to bring to your attention. The majority of responders to the survey rated Westwood's recreation facilities as either very good or excellent. They identified Hale Reservation as the most used open space parcel in the town, followed by Lowell Woods. And eighty-one percent rated active recreation as very important, another sixty percent rated wildlife habitat as very important. So it kind of gives you a flavor of what residents are thinking about open space and recreation. Then the committee held a visioning workshop. It was held on February 21st. We had about sixty residents who attended. Forty-three of those actually signed in and actively participated in table discussions. There was a lot of good conversation that came out of that, and Westwood Media Center recorded it, so it's available for anyone who wants to delve more deeply into what was discussed at the visioning session. The workshop conclusions, again, are summarized in the plan, and these are the ones I wanted to point out. Residents who attended the visioning workshop thought that there was a need for recreation opportunities for residents of all ages. That was stressed from children through senior citizens. And there was a lot of interest in a community recreation center, an indoor facility that we don't currently have. There was an expressed need for continued and improved maintenance of the fields and recreation spaces, as well as a need for additional fields, basketball courts, and tennis courts. The group that attended the visioning session discussed walking paths, bike paths, and trails, and the importance of those in furthering the community feel in town and the sense of community that Westwood experiences. Conservation of open space and natural resources remains a priority. That was the overwhelming priority of the plan when it was written in 2000. It remains an important priority for both recreational use and for environmental preservation. And then finally, the group at the visioning session thought that better signage, maps, and public outreach and education was needed for promoting the recreation and conservation spaces that are available in town. So the next step, over the course of the year, the committee developed a series of goals and objectives for the plan, and you can read through the plan itself to go into more detailed aspects of the different objectives, but I just wanted to go through the overriding goals of the plan. They divide them into three categories. The first category is general goals, second is open space goals, and the third is recreation goals. The goals and objectives are prioritized in each category, but no one category takes preference over another. So the general goals, there are just two of them. The first is to pursue adoption of the Community Preservation Act, which I'll discuss in greater detail, and the second goal is to protect and enhance Westwood's community character. So two very general goals about what the plan is intended to do. In the area of open space goals, there are three goals. The first is to improve management and the condition of conservation areas. The town has acquired quite a bit of conservation land since the original plan was adopted in 2000, and there was a sense that there was a need for better maintenance and preservation of that land. Second goal is to increase awareness about Westwood's existing open space and conservation areas, and to encourage use and protection of those areas. And the third goal is to identify, protect, and acquire lands appropriate for open space and conservation that are contiguous to existing protected land, to provide conductivity, have high natural resource and habitat value, or lands that are in areas of the town with limited open space areas. So there's still an emphasis for acquiring more open space, but they, the committee felt that it was important that the new open space not be random, but be connected to existing spaces or located in areas that are currently underserved. And then there were six recreation goals. The first goal is to expand opportunities for extended use of existing recreational fields and facilities to meet the demanded need. The second goal is to develop a new indoor recreation community center to better serve the community's needs for recreation programming. The third goal is to identify properties which might be available to serve unmet recreational needs, and that could be through expanding the parcels we have, expanding the time that they could be used by adding lighting, by installing artificial turf on existing grass fields. There are different objectives that could meet that goal. Goal four is to develop new outdoor recreation facilities and programs. Goal five is to develop a new ice skating, new ice skating opportunities, which could be anywhere from partnering with another town on an existing or proposed indoor rink to creating its own outdoor rink, to creating an indoor rink somewhere in Westwood. That runs the gamut of different possibilities. And then goal six is to continue to provide quality recreational programming for all Westwood residents. So now I want to get into a little more deeply into the Community Preservation Act. So this Community Preservation Act was a goal of the original 2000 Open Space and Recreation Plan, but the act itself had not yet been passed when that plan was written. So the way the goal was worded in the 2000 plan was to support enabling legislation for a statewide local optional real estate transfer tax to fund open space and housing goals. That was the goal of that plan. Mass. General Law Chapter 44B was eventually adopted later that same year in 2000, and the state through that adopted the Community Preservation Act. So for those people who are not familiar with the Community Preservation Act, this is a law that allows municipalities to implement a local CPA property tax surcharge of anywhere up to three percent, and this provides for annual distributions. If a local city or town adopts this surcharge, they then become eligible for distributions from the state's Community Preservation Trust Fund, and then together, the surcharge amount and the trust fund combine to give the town a community preservation fund. And the Community Preservation Fund can then be used, the funds that are in that fund can be used for four purposes: open space acquisition, development of outdoor recreational facilities, historic preservation, or affordable housing. There's a little bit more detail on this slide, and also in one of the handouts that you have, on specific uses of recreation funds. So there are those four categories: recreation, open space, historic preservation, and community housing, and then there are examples of how you would use funds for those different categories. This slide demonstrates that just for Norfolk County alone, in one year, in 2017, there were significant contributions to the state portion of the fund. I believe they amount to about $2.2 million in Norfolk County. That's money that the state took in under the Community Preservation Act that becomes available to cities and towns that adopt the CPA and have a local surcharge. So communities may set the local surcharge at any amount up to three percent. It could be one percent, two percent, three percent, it could be one and a half percent. I don't think anybody's done it yet, but it could even be point five percent, anything up to three percent. And in addition, towns may adopt various exemptions to properties that would not be charged as surtax. For instance, they, town can exempt the first hundred thousand dollars of assessed value on all properties. They can exempt elderly and low-income households from being required to pay the surcharge, and they can also exempt non-residential properties if they choose to. So you can apply the surcharge only to residential properties, or you can apply it to both residential and commercial. So the town may elect to assess a one percent charge. Many do. Many also choose to elect, to charge a one-point-five percent surcharge. There are a number of communities that charge three percent, and the reason they do that is that the, the state match is actually, there's a bonus category. So communities that adopt a full three percent charge receive additional state funding. So what this slide demonstrates is that, to date, there are one hundred and seventy-three towns and cities that have adopted the CPA. The towns are shown in green, and the cities are shown in orange. So you can see that many of the surrounding towns and cities have adopted the CPA. The Community Preservation Trust Funds, the funds that come into the county registries to provide the state match to these funds, come from all three hundred and fifty-one towns and cities. So what that means is that every town, every city is paying into the state portion of the fund, but only the one hundred and seventy-three towns and cities that have adopted the CPA are eligible to receive that funding.
That number is the fifty-four thousand that Westwood has put in?
So the two-point-two million that I mentioned that Norfolk County received in 2017 included that fifty-four-some-odd thousand dollars from Westwood.
We have no right to that back.
We do not, right. And even if we had the CPA, we wouldn't have a right to all the funds that Westwood put in. It's a match, right. That's right.
So can I, can you walk me through the math? Just, I'll, tell me where, if I'm wrong. So it's a surcharge, which would mean it's not, it is a percentage of the tax that you are assessed.
It is. So I actually have a slide. If I can just hold your question, I'll explain exactly what that is. So this slide, I know it's very difficult to read, but it gives a sampling of communities that have adopted the CPA, and it shows that some of them have adopted it one percent, one and a half, two percent, three percent. Some have exempted the first hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, some have exempt low-income families, some have exempted commercial properties. So there are different towns do it in different ways. What this slide demonstrates is that the percentage of the match that's available to communities that adopt the CPA has dropped significantly over time. So when the CPA first started in 2000, and there weren't that many communities that had signed on, the match was a hundred percent. Of all the funds that the county registries received, went back to the community's hundred percent match. So if you raised, say, three hundred thousand dollars in your local surcharge, you would receive a match of three hundred thousand dollars at that time. Over time, more towns and cities have joined on, and the receipts that have come into the counties in some years have also gotten, have been less than in other years. Most recently, Boston signed on, and that has had a fairly dramatic effect. So where the, at one time, towns and cities were receiving a hundred percent match, the current match is much closer to twenty percent. So Westwood tried to adopt the CPA in accordance with the 2000 Open Space Recreation Plan, and they tried twice, first in 2001, and then again in 2008. In 2001, the proposal that was made by the CPA Coalition that had been formed in Westwood requested adoption of a surcharge of three percent, so the full maximum surcharge that was allowed. This was defeated by a vote of one thousand one hundred and eleven in favor, one thousand four hundred and ninety-two opposed. So it would have had to have passed, I believe, by a two-thirds majority. It did not, did not do that. At the time, that surcharge that was put to the votes was three percent, and the exemptions that were included were for low income and the first hundred thousand dollars' worth of assessed value. Some reasons for the failure, we had a Business Development Advisory Board in place at that time, and they recommended strongly against the CPA because they felt that it was, had provided disproportionate tax to commercial, to business properties over and above the residential properties. In addition, the proposition, two-and-a-half override, and potential tax increases for the high school were pending around the same time, and there was a concern that residents would be overwhelmed by this surcharge in addition to the overrides that were expected. So we tried again in 2008, and in 2008, the adoption was put to town meeting. I believe in 2001, it was actually put to a vote. You're required to do both, I believe, as CPA approval requires, I believe, a vote as well as a town meeting vote. So in 2008, they started with a town meeting. The Finance Commission at that time recommended indefinite postponement, and that was supported by town meeting voters. The vote was one hundred and thirty-seven in favor of the CPA and sixty-nine opposed. I'm sorry, that was one hundred and thirty-seven in favor of indefinite postponement and sixty-nine opposed to indefinite postponement. So again, more residents were in favor of not adopting the CPA than in favor of adopting it. Some of the reasons the FinCom recommended indefinite postponement in 2008, the school had over, two-point-eight-million-dollar operational override just the year prior to that, and they were still concerned about funding. Two thousand and eight was the start of our recession, probably not the best time to consider changes, significant changes. So here's a sampling of some other communities that have voted against the CPA. Several communities over the years, Andover voted against it, Attleboro, Avon, Bellingham, Brookline, Burlington, Danvers, Dedham, Dover. Dedham was actually the most recent in 2017, Foxborough, Franklin, Lynnfield, Mansfield, Medfield, Milton, Stonem, Walpole, and Winchester. So all of those communities, for different reasons, voted not to adopt the CPA. And then we have an example of some communities that chose to adopt it, and some projects that they, they were able to develop as a result. Needham adopted it. I can't read that too well. I think it was in 2008 at a two percent level. Norwood, recently, in 2018, adopted a one percent surcharge. Wayland, way back in 2002, adopted it one and a half percent. Wellesley in 2003, one percent, and Weston in 2002 adopted a full three percent surcharge. And information in your packet shows all the different projects that they've been able to accomplish with the CPA funds. So the draft Open Space Recreation Plan that the committee has sent to you recommends that the town pursue adoption of the Community Preservation Act. The plan does not specify the details of what that would entail, what percent, what exemptions. It just talks about pursuing the idea of Community Preservation Act adoption for further discussion, and that would be at the planning board level. If Westwood were to adopt the CPA this year, based on fiscal year nineteen information, I just want to, I think this answers Dave's question, and I want to give you an idea of what that would mean. So assuming the CPA was adopted with a one percent surcharge on both residential and commercial properties, and with exemptions for the first hundred thousand square foot of assessed value, as well as for low-income and elderly homeowners, these would be the estimated amounts we could expect to see. The average residential property owner would see a surcharge of ninety-two dollars per year that would be added to their tax bill over and above their property tax bill. The average commercial property owner would see a larger amount. That would be approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars that would be a surcharge added to their property tax bill. And the total of all surcharges collected in a single year would be seven-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars. Then that money would be used with a match that would come from the state to create the overall Community Preservation Fund that would be available in Westwood. So assuming a twenty percent match, I haven't added that into there, but a twenty percent match would be about another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So about nine-hundred thousand dollars would be available for programs in open space acquisition, recreational facility development, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So the next slide talks about a recommendation you have received from the town's Long Range Financial Planning Committee. They reviewed the Open Space Recreation Planning Committee's recommendation, their draft plan, and they looked at the CPA. They have looked at it before in 2001 and in 2008, and they took a fresh look at it now. And they recommended against the town sponsoring a CPA warrant article for the May 2019 town meeting. They did so for two reasons. They believe there is too much uncertainty right now with the state matching funds. It's worth noting that the state is considering changing the way that the matching funds are collected, and increasing the amount of funding that could go into that program and then be available to the one hundred and seventy-three towns that currently participate in the program. The Long Range Financial Planning Committee was also concerned about the uncertainty and the timing of new federal tax law, and they expressed the opinion that residents need time to see how the changes to the federal tax law affect their bottom line, I guess I'd say. There will be a limit of ten thousand dollars for exemptions, which in most cases in Westwood would not even cover the real estate, local real estate taxes. So the local... So the local, the long-range financial planning committee recommended that the select board not put a warrant article on for 2019 spring meeting, but that the board remain open to considering the CPA again at a future town meeting. So there's still, they recognize that there are benefits to the program, but they just don't think the timing is right. So now I want to just talk very briefly about the process for the adoption of the Open Space Recreation Plan update. The first step you're engaged in right now, the planning board holds a public hearing to consider the draft OSRP update. The planning board next receives comments from the select board, Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission, from MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, and from all interested residents and organizations that have any stake in recreation and open space in Westwood. The planning board then revises and eventually adopts the open space plan with whatever revisions it believes are necessary. And once it has done that, it sends the adopted Open Space Recreation Plan to town meeting. Last night, the select board finalized the warrant for the 2019 spring town meeting, and we put on a placeholder for an article for the town meeting endorsement of the plan. If the planning board, for any reason, is not prepared to go forward, you don't have a final plan by then, that placeholder can be removed. But for the moment, we're hoping that you will get to the point where you have a final open space and recreation plan that you can take to town meeting for endorsement. Once the plan is endorsed by town meeting, then the town submits the endorsed, adopted endorsed plan to the Department of Conservation and Recreation for approval, and once that approval is granted, the town is then eligible for a number of grant opportunities for recreation and conservation. So that's the quick summary. The details are in the document, which you have before you, but which is also available for the public on the town's website. Anyone who wants to review it in greater detail and get questions and comments to you, I'd ask that you, after discussion and taking in comments, that you continue your hearing to allow for further discussion and further input on January 29th.
Well, thank you, Nora.
You're welcome.
I have some questions if I could ask about the CPA specifically. First, has it been explained here, or could you explain, why is it outdoor recreational space only? Why do they?
I couldn't tell you why, but that statute is clear, that you are not allowed to develop an indoor recreational facility using those funds.
It was just a thought. There must be some rationale as to why they.
The interpretation is that at one point, they didn't even allow maintenance of open space plans. Now there is a certain level of maintenance that they permit.
Okay.
Or restoration, I'd say not ongoing maintenance, but it's all outdoor.
The next, once a town adopts this, is that surcharge annual? And is there an exit? Is there a way for a town to say, you know what, this isn't working?
Yes. So the charge is annual for as long as the town adopts the statute. The town can reverse its adoption of the statute at any time.
Through a town meeting?
For as long as, yes.
Vote?
Through a town meeting vote, in the same manner that it adopted it, it can reverse that. However, if there are projects that have been approved, that have been funded, and they're funded on a multi-year basis, they cannot opt out until those projects are paid off. So for instance, if we had the CPA and we had established a fund, and there was a proposal for, say, acquisition of an open space parcel, and it required a bond, and the CPA funds were set aside to pay that bond over a five-year period, until that fifth payment was collected and paid against that bond, the town could not opt out.
Okay. And the percent, when you adopt it, it stays that percent?
Unless you go back to town meeting and request a change.
Can you change it if you're, back to your earlier point, within that five-year example you gave?
I believe you could, as long as you kept sufficient funds coming in to pay the obligations.
Town meeting can change it annually. The town has the option to change. I think the exemption is lawful. They can vote every year to change.
They can't hear you. Sorry.
So what Steve is saying is that you could have annual articles at town meeting that could change the percentage, could change the exemptions, but with that caveat, you cannot do anything that prevents your meeting your obligations.
Okay. I have two more questions. Did the planning board endorse in '01 and '08?
The planning board adopted the open space plan in 2000.
I meant the CPA.
Oh, the CPA? I don't recall. Do you remember?
Either year?
I believe in 2001, they expressed support. I don't know if the article came at the planning board's sponsorship. I don't recall.
The last time I went before the Fin, oh, Steve Alonoff, 52 Glanrod wrote. See, I'm trying to remember, but obviously, it came before the FinCom, and I would say, maybe that would be the time where the planning board would have said it agrees with them, but I'm not entirely sure. Certainly, when it went before the election, the first time, the planning board wasn't asked to give its opinion while I'm up here. So the election, the town, and I think it's got to be only a minority vote, I mean, a majority vote. It's not a 2/3 or anything, just simple majorities.
I believe we got documentation that indicated it was a majority, not a 2/3.
Majority vote, right. And so really, the town is voting at that time to accept the CPA. And then, when it goes to town meeting, then they can set the actual rate, because they can change it every year. So that could be changed anytime the town meeting goes to vote on it.
Okay. Thanks.
So just one thing I want to add. So the planning board, I can do some research to find out whether there was support from the planning board or not, but it wasn't a zoning article, so the board is not required to make a recommendation. They may have been asked, they may have chosen to make a recommendation, they may have chosen not to. They're not obligated.
In your recollection, does the planning board have any other time where, I mean, this is essentially a tax that we're rendering our opinion on, and does the planning, this seems like we're reaching into an area that we don't typically reach into as a board.
So you're planning. So this is part of an open space plan, and you're recommending a goal of that plan. In 2000, you chose to recommend the goal of seeing this statute adopted, and now it's before you to decide if you're recommending the goal of pursuing the CPA.
Okay.
That's in the plan itself, whether you choose to take it beyond that, whether you would choose to put, to sponsor an article for the CPA, or to recommend adoption of an article that some other board sponsored, that's a completely different matter. So this is just in the planning itself.
My last question has to do with something that's come up in recent years and how it may affect this going forward, the split tax rate. If we lose that, property taxes go up for the residences. If that happens after we adopt this, and then the new math means now your $100 or $92 is now going to be $150.
So if that was the case, if the split tax rate, if the town chooses not to apply the split tax rate, the numbers I showed you there are the $92, I believe, and $282 for commercial. Those numbers are based on the split tax rate. That's why the commercial value is so much higher than the residential, just as the commercial property tax is significantly higher than residential property tax. However, if the town chose to change its taxing formula, it would be implementing the new tax at a town meeting and would have the opportunity to make changes to either eliminate or reduce the surcharge if it chose to do that. So we'd have all the information before it. But you're right, those are questions that would need to be balanced.
So your 1% could turn into what, in your old equation, would be like a 2%? Not, it wouldn't, but a 1.5%. Your bottom line, the taxpayer, instead of $92, could be $130.
Right. So what would happen if the split tax rate was eliminated and the surcharge remained the same, if it was a 1% surcharge? The amount of funding that came in, the $744,000, I believe, would be the same, but it would be distributed differently. So if we were to lose our split tax rate, your property tax bill would raise significantly on residential properties, because now you'd have to take up the slack for the dollars that are not coming in for commercial facilities. And if your tax bill goes up, then a surcharge on that bill would go up proportionally.
Yeah, because it's literally surtax, it's a tax on the tax.
Right.
So the tax goes up, the surtax goes up.
I just didn't know if that, how that would affect.
You'd have an opportunity to vote again on whether you wanted to amend it. But those are, those are questions that would have to be considered in the context of the time when someone was looking to propose the CPA adoption. So the select board has heard from the long-range financial planning committee that they don't recommend it be put on this town meeting warrant, and the select board approved the town meeting warrant at last night's meeting without an article for the CPA. So there's no opportunity at this point to go forward in the spring of 2019. So the plan still recommends pursuing the CPA, doesn't put a time limit on that, but that's for the board to decide if that's the goal that you'd like to see in the plan or not. It wouldn't refer to putting forward an article in May, see, May 2019. It's open-ended.
Thank you.
How does it work if, does it go into like an account for this purpose, and then like let's suppose it was.
It does.
Adopted, and there were no projects right away, and you go five years, you accumulate like five.
You accumulate funds. So it goes into an account, and the select board would have to appoint a CPA committee to oversee the funds, to make decisions about how the funds would be used, and that committee would make recommendations to town meeting, which would have to be adopted on an annual basis. So funds are brought into the account on an annual basis. The committee meets, reviews proposed projects, develops an allocation between the four uses, which doesn't have to be equal. It's not 25% to historic preservation, 25% to affordable housing. It doesn't work that way. The committee is able to allocate the funds in the manner it feels is most appropriate, and then they make that recommendation to town meeting. But town meeting actually is the body that then grants approval for the use of the funds.
Can we accumulate those funds?
You can.
Or do we have to make allocations every year?
You don't have to make allocations every year. You can accumulate the funds and use them when you have a project that's appropriate. In some cases, communities save for quite a few years to fund larger projects. In other cases, they bond a project to be paid for with funds that have not even been acquired yet. They might have one or two years of the funds, and then they bond a project and fund it out of future years. So there are different ways to handle it, and that's what the CPA committee would be tasked with making those decisions for recommendations to town meeting. But town meeting is the final authority on what funding gets spent for what projects.
This might be more of a strategic question, but I'm kind of, I'm wondering, is it critical that that goal be a part of this plan? Because I think what's going to, will happen with this is what's happened here, is we've had 40 minutes of talking about money, and we're, no, I'm not, because you laid out the whole rest of it, but I think what's going to happen with this, this is the most controversial element of this plan, and I'd kind of like to talk about, you know, all the other, the things that we want to do.
Mm-hmm.
But I just, I'm like, what's the kind of thought on?
Nothing has to be in the plan. That's up to the planning board to decide what you think is appropriate to put in the plan and what's not. The CPA was included for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that the goal in the 2000 plan was to adopt that surcharge, or to encourage the state to adopt the law that eventually allowed for the surcharge. So it was a natural progression for the committee to recommend now the next step would be adopting the CPA. Once that surcharge was put in place, or the statute that allows a surcharge was put in place in 2000, the planning board from that point on, as we reviewed the Open Space Recreation Plan in the years following the adoption in 2000, and as we discussed the comprehensive plan later in 2000, the thought was that adopting the CPA was a laudable goal, and as we discussed, it was attempted on two occasions. It's up to this board now to decide if that's still a laudable goal, both for the Open Space Recreation Plan and then eventually for the comprehensive plan. So that's a decision that you need to make. It does not have to be in there. However, if it's not in there, if there's a decision not to pursue the CPA, then what you probably want to do is look at other funding sources for some of the proposals that come out of the Open Space Recreation Plan. So the plan, the other goals in the plan, both the goals for open space acquisition and the goals for recreation development, all would need some funding source. So the question is, if the CPA is not the selected funding source, then you might want to identify what another funding source might be.
Can't that always be amended, though, if we decide to have the CPA as a funding source later on? We could take a vote on it and add it to the plan?
You can update the plan as often as you'd like. It is somewhat costly if you, you can't simply amend the plan without going back to the DCR for further approval. So I wouldn't recommend updating or amending the plan more often than necessary, because it is a costly, time-consuming project. And each time you amend it, you need to go through the full public participation process. So the way the goal is worded right now, it's open-ended as far as time goes. You could do a couple of things. You could leave it as is, you could take it out entirely, or you could revise it to, say, rather than pursue the CPA, continue to investigate the timing, you know, of when it may be beneficial to consider the CPA.
Essentially what the long-range planning committee said.
Yes, yes. Remain open to considering the CPA if conditions warrant.
So how, how do we want to proceed with the discussion of this huge document here? Do we want to go and through each of the goals and see what kind of reactions, or do we want to?
Can I ask a general question first? Nora, ah, sorry. How come the open space came first? The reason why I'm asking is because I'm thinking the schools is big right now, and that's going to be happening in the next, what, five, seven years? So I'm wondering if that had come first, would it have changed the wants and needs of this plan or the timelines?
So this plan was developed over the course of the past year, and the school project has been known throughout that time. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I don't think that this plan was done in a vacuum. The school plan was always on the forefront of people's minds as they adopted it. The timing of this plan is coordinated with the timing of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan has elements that need to reference the Open Space Recreation Plan. So developing a new comprehensive plan in 2019 that references an old open space plan from 2000 is not very helpful. So the idea was to update the open space plan so that the comprehensive plan can then reference that. And the other reason is to, again, become eligible for grants. State grants are not available to the town unless we have an approved open space recreation plan.
Well, don't everybody speak on it.
No, I mean, I read through the plan itself, so I have certain questions that I have on the item. Were you thinking about going through each one section by section, and then if anybody had any questions or comments for each one?
I think, I think what we would do is, we're here tonight to have this initial discussion. We should cover the whole thing, essentially, but we know we'll probably continue this to a future meeting, and then there'll be feedback, and people can submit comments and stuff, and so. So I mean, I think it would make sense to, just like, so for goal two, I don't, that's the opposite of goal one. There's nothing controversial in there, so I don't know if that, but I think getting into the specifics of the open space and the recreation things would be useful, if people have thoughts on those items, or if anyone wants to jump in with. Charlie, do you want to? So, yeah, if there anyone from the public who'd like to comment immediately now, and I think you raised your hand first. We'll see if John wants to.
My name is Charlie Donahue. I live on 407 Gay Street, and I was on the community preservation. I was with the committee that was doing the open spaces and recreation. And I think as we went through a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of creative thinking from all parties, suddenly it came up on how are we going to pay for this? That was the big question. And that's the only reason we're now trying to say, could we somehow have the agenda sometime in the next few years seriously look at? Could we go after this community preservation? I don't think the timing is right, we're not looking at immediate action. But the first thing that struck us as we looked at what other towns have done it that relate to our size, we compete with them. And a couple of things came out from looking at that. There's a lot of towns we compete with educationally, we compete with having high-quality community, Conkot Act and Duxbury, Cohasset, Hingham, Wellsley, Weston. Many of them have done this 18 years ago, 15 years ago. Many of them have done this eighteen years ago, fifteen years ago. And our town people go to these meetings with these people and all they do is explain all their latest projects. And our people sit there saying, this is kind of an embarrassment, what they're doing in these towns with this kind of money. Uh, our kids who compete with Holliston, Hoppeington, Medway, Millis, they compete in soccer, all these, so, suddenly, I think, we started to look more seriously at this very difficult issue. What do we do? One of, one town official I know goes to a lot of meetings with the town of Bedford. Just to give you a summary, this is what he's been hearing for the last fifteen years. With their community preservation money, six, uh, six thousand square foot next to the existing ball field property, tennis courts, bike paths, study town athletic fields, accessibility to the town trails, sixteen-acre lot next to the wildlife, five acres of Fawn Lake, the old town hall renovation, the town center renovation, uh, redevelopment of elderly housing, affordable housing. That's what that one town of Bedford has been doing. A clonkhead which we compete, keep with athletics from town to town, purchased eighty acres of land, seeding all the areas as fields, field renovation, uh, new playgrounds, football, baseball fields, children's playgrounds. A lot of the historic buildings have been restored, preserved affordable housing, new affordable housing, senior housing. So, you suddenly look at, these are towns like us and this is what they're doing with their money for their kids, for the senior citizens and all the rest. So, when we started to look into it even further, it became clear it's not, the timing isn't perfect. We've got the schools to consider coming up in the future. But I think a lot of work is needed to just look into, could we do it? Could we do it in some way? Is there enough people here to wanna do it? Uh, and I think what we're really looking for our support for is to say, we need to continue looking at this very seriously, not just throwing it off and say, we'll come to it in another ten or fifteen years. Because there's a lot of opportunity to do things in this town that we need. Uh, we're at the cutting edge of education, cutting edge of new fire stations, police stations, libraries. But in this area, if you look at the hundred and seventy-three towns that have done it already and all of these innovative things that they're doing, we're, we're in a backwater. We're, we're way behind everybody. Uh, and there's been good reasons maybe for it. But I just, would just ask, we're not asking you to adopt the community preservation, but just to say, it's an important thing to continue, to continue to look at, to get better informed. And education is the most important thing because most of the people I know who I've talked to, who are against the, the word tax, I don't wanna pay any more taxes in this town, that, that kills it without even looking at the benefits from it. Uh, and if it's seventy dollars or eighty dollars, you contribute for most people, uh, I think it's something that really needs further work consideration. But thank you for your time looking into this. Uh, a lot of work was done to bring this before you. Uh, and I just think we need to, you know, look at other ways of, uh, paying for it, which, again, a hundred and seventy-three town, other towns have done already. But thank you very much for your time looking at this information.
Thank you. John, you wanna?
Thank you all. My name is John Hickey. I live at 117 Sunrise Road. I'm a member of the, the Select Board. And I wanted to start off by thanking all of the people who spent an awful lot of time on this. And I'm in agreement with almost everything written in the open space and recreation goals. And I wanna just mention, Mr. Donahue was really my ally, uh, on the committee in, in looking to diversify our recreational facilities. We really do lack in kind of that indoor multipurpose ring-type space. Um, and as we look to the future, I think that's important when we look at our, our portfolio, when we compete, um, when we just compete for residents looking for places to live. And it's important that our, our athletes and our student athletes have, have the best. I'll remind everybody that the Westwood High Girls, uh, won the state championship in hockey a few years ago. And that team practices at 5:00 AM in West Roxbury three days a week. So, not the ideal situation long-term. Shouldn't be the driver, but it's one example of the things that we do and the money that we spend that I think if we really look at using more wisely and using it internally, we could have a better, a better experience for our people. I, I agree with the chair wholeheartedly that my fear with the CPA language in the, in the draft proposal as it is now will really drive a referendum on the CPA and not a robust discussion on conservation and open space and recreation. And I do think there's a happy medium. I think that the existing plan, and I think we have to remind everybody, this current document is a revision of a document that existed and we're looking to revise it. I think mentioning that the CPA is a mechanism that half of the municipalities in Massachusetts have used to fund these goals is something that we should continue to talk about and we should vet it at some point. As the document is written, though, I think it, it appears to me, and I think it'll be viewed, that the CPA is the means to the end. And really, the CPA is not the means to the end. The, the, the goals should be open space and recreation and then we look at various ways of funding. CPA is but one small piece. Long-range financial planning focused quite a bit on the fact that the return right now is about twenty percent. So, we're asking people to pay more when the return is not that much. We, we have to keep in mind that in the spring of 2016, Westwood purchased five acres of land. Town meeting allotted nine hundred thousand dollars to purchase land. We're going forward this year with a request for twenty thousand dollars to study the best uses for that. We've had private benefactors who've helped us preserve open space. We've had state appropriations for historical uses. So, there's a lot of, of tools to be used in, in, in pursuing these goals. But I don't want the, the CPA to blur the focus, which is open space and recreation. And as a community, how do we best feel about what are our priorities going forward? We need to assess those priorities. When we, when we do a big project at our house, right? We, we dream about what could be and then we do the budget, right? So, I think we, we shouldn't shortchange ourselves in saying the CPA will be the mechanism because I think we limit ourselves. It's definitely worthy of discussion. And I think there's some language that could be included in the document. But I, I fear that if we open the document as is and it's the goal, and then the language as written says, um, "A major recommendation of the open space recreation plan is for Westwood to consider adopting the Community Preservation Act." I just think if we soften that, um, we will have a great product. And so, overall, I agree with almost everything that's been said here tonight. Um, I just don't want the open space and recreation plan to become a referendum on this, the Community Preservation Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Steve?
Steve Allonoff. And I am the chairman of the Open Space and Recreation, Recreational Plan Committee. So, yeah, I, I, I kinda agree that we, it certainly needs to be in there because the committee did recommend it. The wording is, uh, again, I don't know that the committee came up with that exact wording. The wording is to pursue the CPA. And so, if, you know, consider pursuing it or pursuing it at a future time or, or making clear it's one of the mechanisms for funding this, uh, then that's fine. Going back to what was said before when we originally, uh, tried, when the town originally tried to get the CPA, the second time I was on the committee, the, the Select Board appointed a committee to consider whether we should go for the CPA, the, that board recommended that we do pursue it. And then, it went on, uh, so the Selectman put in an article in town meeting, I believe. That's the way it was done. I don't think the planning board ever got involved in one way or the other in making any recommendations at the time. And I know the question is, you know, are you getting involved in any tax questions here? I don't think you are. And I think we shouldn't be worrying about it so much. What you're doing is just stating that, that this is one of the means, you know, this is a plan and this is one of the means of, of carrying out and funding the plans. You're not recommending that the town adopt the CPA. What you're recommending is that one of the funding mechanisms for, uh, funding some of, some of these things would be adopting the CPA. So, the town should definitely, uh, look into that, that. And I think, uh, we can work out some wording and, and that will, uh, be, be clear that that's what that is.
Well, it seems, I mean, it seems to me like it's the action plan, like it's, it's, how do you, how do you implement the, the goals and objectives? And one of the ways to do that would be adopting the CPA. Another way would be to have an override or something, I guess, or pursue grants. Like, there's lots of things that, um, I just wonder why it wouldn't just be there. Because, yeah, my reaction too, and I, I was surprised that that seemed to be the, the big thing on this and then-
Yeah, well, I think the, the, the committee was pretty clear that that should be one of the, the means and, and may, maybe that would be a major means because that would be, they looked at how much money that could bring in. And certainly, they saw that, that could help fund, uh, some of, of these things. So, uh, I don't think we, we should drop it out, it out of the plan because, because the, uh, committee was very unanimous in saying that it should be in the plan, that that's one of the methods of pursuing it. So, if, I think, if we got the wording a little bit wrong, saying, not making clear that's one of the methods, uh, but it's a method that was highly recommended by the committee, uh, then we should state it properly.
It seems to me that if, if we're asking for the town to vote on this, they need to be made aware, as John pointed out, of all the funding mechanisms we have available to us. As this reads right now, I thought this was all or nothing.
Okay, so, yeah.
And so, I think this is really confusing. And having attended numerous town meetings in the past where we still can't clearly articulate to people what indefinite postponement means, I really don't think we're gonna articulate and convey all the nuances of what is, is gonna happen with the CPA. I mean, we, I, I asked Nora a lot of pointed questions and I, they all went into my decision-making. I haven't decided yet, but do I like this? Do I not? There's no way, I mean, there's a half, there's a dozen more questions to be asked to let people make a fully informed decision on the CPA. Because it does involve reaching into their pocketbooks. And I really think right now, if this is what you're asking, the town is gonna say, no. That's my gut. Because you haven't said, we have other ways of doing this, as John articulated. It doesn't show up anywhere in here.
Uh, I thought it did. And if it doesn't, we should certainly correct that.
And when I read this, I thought, okay, CPA. And I asked Nora a month ago, if this doesn't happen, does that mean nothing else can happen? And she said, no, but it still didn't ring true in, in my mind. And so, the, the, the advanced discussion is incredibly helpful tonight. But town meeting doesn't have the benefit of this. They're gonna read a paragraph of something and I really don't think all of this is gonna be, is gonna sink in to the people at town meeting. I really don't think putting your, all your eggs in the CPA basket is the way to go to write this thing. I, I think you need to say, here, here's what we have at our disposal. And if we vote to go CPA, it, it will involve a surcharge in this. Explain it as best you can, but it's not the only way to do this. And right now, that's how it's presented. I know you, you already mentioned, we'll change the wording. I think it needs more than just a tweak of consider or, uh, adopt.
We can, I mean, this is not final wording. We can work on it. Uh, another thing I'd like to point out that if we didn't have this plan, we could still go ahead, the town could still go ahead and consider and, and, uh, go for the CPA. If we didn't have it, if we had it in the document, that's not committing the town to do it. This is just a plan. Uh, and, and if we, uh, if it's in there and the town doesn't do it, then they're just not following what's in the plan. But it's, it's not like you have to do it. This is only a plan. So, I think, uh, what the committee wanted was to say, hey, look, we, we have to really seriously consider, this is one of the methods of funding some of these items that we wanna do on the plan.
And I, I'm completely in agreement. We should pursue, uh, exploration into this. I just think right now, the way this was presented, it, it appeared to me to be, if you don't like, if you don't like everything in here, then you don't like anything in here. And that's not true in my case. I like a lot of what Dave talked about, all the rest of it, the guts of what we're talking about, not just the funding.
So, we'll work on a better wording and not just in this one spot, but anywhere in the document where we see that it should be clear what funding sources are, then we'll make it, if I make it clearer.
I don't wanna profess to speak for any other board members. I'm just, my, that was my reaction to reading.
Yeah, I feel the same way, Chris. Uh, my, my concern is that this document won't get approved at town meeting and then we lose the opportunity for-
Yeah, that's what I, I don't wanna see that.
Well, it definitely wanted to get, to me, it's like, it's not a big, it, it's an important thing, but it's not, like, the whole plan revolves around it. It's, it says, this was pointing out, they wanted to point out that this should be considered because it could be a major funding source for items in the plan. It's not the plan itself. The plan is the actions that you wanna do it. But it needs to be in the plan because-
I don't disagree. People need to know this is available.
And also because the committee was so enthusiastic about it.
It's a fiscally responsible answer to all the things you wanna do, but it, but it kinda leads off like that. So, then it, I think-
Because it only mentions that one.
And the perception would be, oh, once we have all this money, we'll be able to do great stuff. And it's like, okay, why don't we talk about the great stuff?
Like, give us a hundred bucks and we'll, you know, the sky's the limit. It's not the case here.
So, even just kinda getting into like the open space stuff, so, management of the conservation areas. So, what are the sorts of things that, um, and there's items here talking about the trails program and all, I mean, because now people would say, do you need a million dollars to, um, to keep the trails at Lowell Woods in good shape? Probably not. But, but what, is this enough specificity here for, for that management and condition of conservation areas, kind of the items that are listed here? I mean, do we wanna go into, I kinda feel like more, the more detail, the better in that and kinda bulging out some specific ideas like, um, you know, whether, uh, just how we could improve the trails, make them more accessible. I think as Nora was talking about, people don't know all the opportunities that are available in Westwood. There's hail reservation, there's Lowell Woods. So, is this plan to feature some of the other lesser-known places, um, to promote more programming at Senke and, um, things like that or kinda what?
Yeah, so, the, the plan does mention the Westwood Community Trails Program, which I happen to have a lot to do with. And it's, uh, it's being funded, uh, hopefully, it's in the, this budget coming up. Ten thousand dollars, half from the Recreation, uh, Commission's budget and half from the DPW's budget because it is, provides another recreational activity that is not provided for in the town right now. And it'd be helping the DPW because they're, they have to manage and, and, uh, maintain these trails. And that would be, uh, doing it for them. So, uh, I think it's, it's a good program that gets those things done. And, uh, so that's mentioned as, uh, as part of the plan. I think the big item is that the management plans for, uh, each conservation area. I think that's the big, if you notice, the goals, uh, are reversed from before. Before it was to acquire land was the first goal. Now, that's the third goal. The, the first goal is to utilize and improve and manage the conservation land that we have. And unfortunately, we haven't had any plans. DPW goes into a, a conservation area and there's a field there. They don't know, are they supposed to mow the field? Are they supposed to leave it? And what's happened is, uh, I can point out the Anderson Farm, which was required as for the courier, part of the courier reservation, uh, when he died. There's a, a nice field there where the animals used to graze. Uh, DPW didn't know what to do and no one told them because there was no plan. And so, that, uh, nothing was done with that field. That field is now growing up again into a forest. And the town needs more field areas. So, these plans would tell us, you know, what are we, how are we supposed to manage it? Is in, you know, trails, no trails? Is it, some of the conservation land is a buffer? This is, hasn't been done before and needs to be done. So, that's why that's goal number one.
So, that's like every, um, so there'd be a plan, like, right now, there is, there's nothing written down, but you would, there'd be a document or something that says, here's, here's, here's what courier-
The Conservation Commission is actually starting to do that now. And they should continue to do that and, uh, make up a plan for every single conservation area. And it's a separate plan because every conservation area is a little bit different, is how active and how passive the, the activities are on it and how it's managed.
And so, like, the objectives of goal two, increase awareness about the open space, that would tie into that also. You have kind of a management plan, but you could also have a communication plan. I think it's really marketing these, these, um, these open space. What is, what is this one standing?
Yeah, so, so, if you go to other towns, the Conservation Commission has been very active in some other towns in promoting their conservation areas. Uh, this, our Conservation Commission unfortunately hasn't done that. I think the, the new, uh, Westwood Community Trails Program is a means of doing that. So, uh, uh, we're having, that's, that program is being managed by hail reservation by their staff because that's what they do now. And so, with a little effort, they can just exp- And so with a little effort, they can just expand it to do, do it for Westwood itself. And we, so that will help to promote the, these areas and get better usage and have real activities on them.
So would the Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent be essentially responsible for managing this, or kind of would you, would you want to make some, a recommendation to assign a person or a department or something to that? Would that be helpful to, to be more specific? Because there's sort of, their objectives, you promote, develop, create an app, I mean, there's some very specific things here. But yeah, I'm thinking it's that, there are a lot of ideas of how to get, work with the Cub Scouts and all that, but is it that there'd be a staff person who 50% of their job would be devoted to managing this, or kind of how?
Yeah, a lot of that will be done by, by the Westwood Community Trails Program. We will be organizing that kind of thing. And the staff involved there would be hail reservation staff, which this town is paying them to do, to do that. And the idea is that, we have lots of volunteers in this town who want to fix, you know, maintain trails, would be happy to lead hikes, but, and they have been over the years, and they've come and gone over the years as people move on to different things. And this will be, creates a consistent program because you have a consistent staff that is organizing these volunteers. So those volunteers would be maintaining trails, organizing hikes, and things like cleanups, the Earth Day cleanup and things like that.
I just want to point out, there's an action plan towards the rear of the open space plan that, so you start with the goals, then you get the objectives, and then the action plan has specific actions that would accomplish those objectives. So in the case of the open space goal to improve the management and condition of the conservation areas, that would involve specific actions. One of the actions would be developing a land management plan for each conservation area. That would be done by the Conservation Commission with the assistance of the Conservation Agent, and in most cases, they would need to have a consultant who's specifically familiar with the type of management that's needed. For instance, we have conservation areas that have ponds, and one that comes to mind is Perry Kraus Pond. The Conservation Commission recently spent about $20,000 removing invasive species and restoring that pond, and is now asking for additional funds in the, in the upcoming town meeting to do further restoration. So for a property like that, that requires a fairly intense land management plan with specific procedures that need to be done on an annual basis. Then we have other conservation areas that maybe are far less detailed, that don't require so much work. For instance, Sandy Valley Conservation Area, I would say mostly what's required there is maintenance of the trails themselves. The conservation area is intended to remain in its natural state. Where there's small water bodies, those need additional work, but where it's just a forested trail, they're very simple means of restoring and keeping up to date. So that would be a specific action for each, I believe there are 37 active conservation areas that the Conservation Commission is responsible for, so there would be 37 land management plans. And then they go on beyond that. The quest, the goal two there, that's about increasing awareness, that would be, would involve the conservation area agent developing brochures and probably a social media page of some kind that has identified each of the conservation areas and what you could find there, when you could access it, if there are hours that are limited, or seasons when it's available and other seasons when it's not, that would all be put into that.
Thanks, thanks Nora. So I think that also, that helps to show why the plan is so important, because as the years go down the road, people say, why, you know, why are they, why is the town spending time on this plan? Well, it's, or why is the town coming up, writing up the document about courier reservation? Or why are they doing, why are they cleaning all this brush? And it's because it's in the plan, it's part of the, part of the action plan and part of the goals here. So that's kind of why we're doing the whole thing, is because it answers those questions. When people say, why, you know, is there a purposeful approach to things in town? And yes, there is, which gets into a lot of detail here. Does anybody?
Well, I was thinking, it's a large document, I read through with my comments. We have a meeting on January 29th. Should we, instead of going page by page, because I think that's going to be painstaking and not as fruitful, as I think if we came back on January 29th with very discreet recommendations for modification, I think that might be the most effective way to go through with that.
Could I say, and don't wait, if you have any suggestions for changes to it, why don't you submit them to us and to Nora, and we can, you know, if they're, nothing complicated, we can get them done right away. And then anything else.
Unless it's things that have to be discussed amongst us.
And we'll come back with, with other work, with better wording for the CPA stuff at the next meeting.
So there'd be a redraft of, and then in our next meeting, we'd have the, a redrafted version of this, or?
Right. I think, I mean, you would want to review it on, on your own and come to the meeting with the, the board, which would probably discuss what your changes are. I mean, you could send it to me, so I could have it ready for your meeting on the 29th continued hearing.
But the first time we saw anyone else's comments would be at that meeting. So we'd have to absorb and comment back within the hour or two of discussion.
But I think it's, if.
We also have comments coming from the Commission on Disability. They're meeting later in the week, on Friday, the 11th, so they said, they let me know that they're going to review the plan and would like to send you comments. You did get some initial comments from one of the members requesting accessibility improvements at some of the conservation areas, trail areas, and then also at playgrounds for specifically signage upgrades for visually impaired people to be included. So that could be incorporated. You did get that letter, that could probably be incorporated into, I think, probably goals one and six were, were about improvements to the recreation and open space areas for access.
I'm just thinking about the, the open meeting issues of this, like if.
Right.
So we can't, for example, if we all sent you our comments and then you sent them back out to us, we can't do that outside of a public hearing. We could send you, we could submit comments like anybody to the committee, and they could put together a draft and then present that draft to us at the next meeting.
Yeah, I could prepare general updates and comments to have ready for your meeting on 29th, but you can't.
So what we can do is, we can receive comments from each of the board members, along with the comments that have been received from other boards and committees and residents who've just commented on the plan. We can give you a revised update based on those comments we've received. We can post that revised update, but what we cannot do is say that Chairman Atkins recommended these changes, and Planning Board Member Gorman recommended these changes. We can't do that. But we can take all of your concerns, along with the concerns we've received from other boards and from residents, and we can develop an updated draft, post that updated draft, and you'll be able to review that before the meeting.
So I think what we, what we can do tonight is this sort of general guidance kind of stuff, I think, and that, and so you're, I figure you're the point.
We would take the general guidance that you give us tonight and develop the next level draft for your review.
And so I think we saw, we have some, I think there's a consensus about issues with the CPA in here, and I didn't mean to imply that I would say, take it out completely, but I think that everyone, like John Hickey and everybody was kind of, we all had the same concerns. We worried that that would, the way that it's presented is the main goal of everything versus an action as a way to implement it. So I think that's one consensus.
So I think the Select Board is going to consider the draft that we have before us now, and any changes that come before their next meeting, and give a letter to this board for its January 29th meeting. But they had a very brief discussion at their meeting last night, and one of the suggestions that was made in the course of that, not discussed by the whole board, and no, no consensus of the board was reached yet. It wasn't an agenda item for them to discuss, but it was just the idea of it coming up under discussion. One of the, one of the comments was that the CPA doesn't need to be a goal. The CPA can be an action item rather than a goal.
Right.
So that might be one way of addressing it. So it's still in there, there's still a discussion of what the CPA is and what the benefits are, but it's not, the pursuit of the CPA is not a goal of the plan. It's an action item to implement a goal and objective, or multiple goals and objectives.
That's an interesting idea.
I wonder if anyone, we could have a couple more minutes of, if anyone had any other reactions to this, like, one thing I thought of was, how would, I don't see a lot of talk about Morrison Field in here. And I know that there's, there's the indoor facility and all, but I didn't see much of that, and I think one of the challenges of parking and access to these things, I'd like to see if there could be, if that fits in somewhere in the plan to, you know, and specifically for Morrison Field, it was like, is there a way to make it so that it's, the parking problem could be addressed somehow through something creative? I think the tennis courts, you know, the whole, that's been, what's going to happen to the tennis court, basketball court, that's very specific, detailed stuff, that's maybe not for the, for this plan, but that's, I think, an area that would be helpful to talk about in the context of how people can access these, these things. If you can't get to it, if it's not convenient, then you won't be able to use the recreation opportunities.
Nothing additional from me.
No.
All right, so I think if, any ideas, people send them to Nora. Fran, do you have it? What do you want to say?
It's probably more directed to Nora than the Planning Board. Nora, I just want to ask you, have the Open Space Recreation Plan goals been prioritized against the five-year capital spending plan? Because that's going to be quite a hefty price tag in the next five years, 200 million.
So the Open Space Recreation Plan goals are about open space and recreation and not about funding it, so they have not been lined up next to each other and prioritized. And that, in fact, is not the Planning Board's role to make those priority decisions. That is up to the Select Board and the FinCom and the Long Range Financial Planning Committee to discuss which projects get funded in which order. What this plan is intended to do is to specify what the goals are in the areas of recreation and open space, and how you should prioritize what the greatest open space goal is, what the greatest recreation goal is, and how we should pursue them, not to determine how specifically they're funded. That's one of the reasons why the comment was made about the CPA maybe being misplaced by list, being listed as a goal as opposed to a means of accomplishing a goal. This, the Planning Board's job is not to fund projects, nor is it to decide what the priorities are for town funding of projects. But what its goal is here, and its job here, is to determine a plan, first for open space and recreation, and eventually a comprehensive plan for the entire town. Even in writing the comprehensive plan, it's not the Planning Board's job to determine how the aspects are paid for and in what order. It's just to recommend what goals should be pursued and what goals are no longer valid.
So do we continue the hearing?
All right. I think we could continue.
Yeah, so I make a motion to continue hearing to January 29th meeting. In Carby.
Carby Street, 7:00 PM.
Champagne Room.
A second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that will be continued. Okay.
Chasing up to be quite busy, isn't it?
Yes.
What do we have for the in-between there? Do we have?
It's three weeks away because there's the FinCom article sponsor meeting on the 22nd.
Okay, the next item, next item on the agenda, comprehensive plan update.
Right. The next steps for the comprehensive plan are still to get the survey out, still working on that, and also secure a consultant to schedule the vision session. So those have not been finalized yet. The website is in good shape, so we have a comprehensive planning page with the committee. The committee members working on the facilities section, they have started contacting and doing some of their outreach to the community facility stakeholders, and they are scheduled to meet with the Board of Library Trustees next week on Monday, the 14th, and then the following, no, in February 6th, with the Council on Aging at the Senior Center. So at that time, they'll be introducing the process, that they're looking for updates and hear from them on what their needs are. I was hoping to have the survey out at this time, we don't have it yet, but that will be next. Those are the next two items coming up.
Okay. Item number six, warrant closed for annual town meeting zoning article review.
Right, so if you saw in your packet, I did submit the six articles that you talked about the last meeting in December. I believe the warrant closed at last night's town meeting. We did, as Nora mentioned, added the additional placeholder for the Open Space and Recreation Plan in case that goes forward. The list of articles, I think it was six and three being the three that were disapproved. I don't have any new information at this time.
Yeah, did anyone have, if no one had any, so we'll just present these at the information meeting.
Right, so they're going to be forwarded to the FinCom is the next step, and then on Jan, January 22nd, the FinCom will have their first meeting, and that's an introduction of the articles. So usually myself and Dave attends that to do a general overview of the articles. And then in March, I think the March 4th.
That's the required.
Is the public hearing. So you should save the dates of the FinCom's public hearings, which are Monday, the 4th, and then the following day, on the 5th, and Tuesday, 5th, if they need to go into the second night. That's their first round of public hearings, so you'll attend those as a joint hearing, or to attend and participate. And then the second set of hearings is Monday, March 25th, and Tuesday, the 26th of March, if it goes into that day. You'll have.
Do you mind repeating those?
Oh, sure.
They're already here, sorry.
At the bottom of the agenda. But your hearing, we'll usually have your public hearing open first at your February 26th meeting. So we have two, two more meetings to kind of work out the language, and we'll get the public hearing notice to the newspaper, and we can work on that language at your January 29th and February 12th meeting. Then you'll have your public hearing on February 26th.
All right. The next, Abby, you just want to go through the items you have there.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's our business.
Um, so for the zoning board, they're meeting next week, the only item they have is 240 University Ave, so I will draft a memo with the updates from tonight with some of those changes, especially they'll want to know about that change, the material for the snow removal and the O and M plan. So I'll provide that update tomorrow. You may have received, you should have received the conflict of interest law. I'll hand this out to you all, because you all need to, should review it, read it, and then you have to submit this form back to the town clerk. So you can either take it with you, or if you've looked at it.
Just pass these on.
Yep, if you pass it down. And, or you can send it to me if you've done that. And then every two years, all board members, so as board members, you are considered municipal employees, so you are subject to the same laws as employees about any conflict of interest, not receiving any gifts for doing your job. So also every two years, you have to take this online ethics training. I sent you the link, I'll keep sending it. I don't remember who's up. Debbie may have just taken it recently, so you don't have to do it every two years. So as long as you have done it every two years. At the end of the training, you'll get a little certificate that can be, I think, saved and emailed to the town clerk, or you could send it to me and I could send it to the town clerk.
Do we get a pension?
Nope.
Percent of what we make for this?
Zero.
Will you submit a report?
Update on Islington Center, um, I think, uh, after you last met, the demolition and site work is, um, continuing. I don't think I have any other updates at, um, at this time.
Did I see that taking a house down? Yeah, that was the.
The Cohen House, yes, that was the one behind. So that's going to be where the municipal lot will be in that area.
I don't remember there being a house in this plan.
And then the first building that will go up will be the CVS building. And then there's still, um, need to work out the relocation of the transformer so the Blue Heart Tavern, um, can be removed. And Patrussiel is still working on finalizing those restoration plans, uh, for the Blue Heart Tavern. I haven't had those yet.
When are they hoping to break ground for CVS?
They already did.
They did?
There's a hole there.
They broke the ground.
They haven't submitted a building primary yet, but.
But they dug the hole. Is there, uh, not Islington related, but I, I thought I saw some activity on the tennis courts at the high school. Have they started?
Yes, I believe they've started with the.
Foundations are there?
Yeah, for the light pieces, because they'd like to get those up and running for the spring season.
What happened with the, uh?
Illegal activity is not.
Illegal activity.
They're pursuing at, uh, risk.
Thought there might be an injunction or something.
How many times has the East Street Bridge been hit since, uh?
We last met.
Yeah, the road is going to be, yeah, the road still needs to be lowered, which will be in the spring.
Who had two in the pool? You win.
Uh, also for your next meeting, so you do have, um, a couple of items from University Station coming up. Um, so I will, um, for your next meeting, we will have an update to all of your rules and regulations. Um, the trigger for doing them all, uh, right now is that we're going to online permitting. Uh, we expect to be live later this week or early next week, that applicants will start applying completely online. Um, so right now, we get everything electronically, but they still provide paper copies. So your packet will still look the same in this I Q M system that we send out, electronic packet, but you won't be getting the paper copies anymore. Um, so I'll soon be sending you a modification application to the Master Development Plan for University Station. Um, the building that was previously shown as office and retail is now proposed to be all office. And an application has been submitted for project development review for that office building. So I expect that at your.
What is that, in front of the condos?
Um, yep, that's going to be on University Ave, um, closest to, yep, in front of the park, next to Natche Everest Joe's. Um, so that'll be your next meeting on, it'll probably be January twenty ninth and February twelfth meetings. So you'll have those coming.
Great, thank you.
Meeting minutes? So we have the meeting minutes from our last meeting. Have you had a chance to review?
I did. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes that's submitted for December the eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, the meeting minutes are approved. Do you have anything else, Abby?
I don't think so. Um, another date, oh, February fifth, Tuesday evening, seven P M, in, in this room, there's going to be a, um, Complete Streets Public Meeting for initial presentation on the redesign of, um, Collaboratory and Winter Street Intersection. Um, that was, uh, through the Complete Streets Funding Program.
Isn't there also a meeting the same time as our, is it, is it right now?
Yes. No, that's February twelfth, there is one for the Gay Street Sidewalk, the fifty percent design plans. Unfortunately, it, it conflicts with your, um, February twelfth date. That's February twelfth at the, uh, library at seven P M. Um, updated design plans for the Gay Street Sidewalk.
Because usually they present multiple times, the same presentation?
Yeah, and I, I believe it'll be, well, I'll have to check, but I expect it would be televised. So we'll have to check with, um, see about.
They could just, uh, give us the materials, uh, or just got a power.
Could ask, see what.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Eight fifty-six.